Good morning, I'm the county council. Welcome to March and welcome to Budget Day. Also, welcome any member of the public and press that are with us today. And I'll ask Mr. Tifo to take the roll call, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. And welcome again, members of council and members of the office online. I will start with Council Arnold.
Present.
Thank you, Council Burr.
Present.
Thank you, Council Bushy. Council Bushy. Council Bradley. Council Bradley. Council Broad.
Present.
Thank you, Council Cook.
Present.
Thank you, Council Ferguson.
Present.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Hand.
Present.
Thank you, Council Lucely.
Present.
Thank you, Council Miller.
Present.
Thank you, Council Napper.
Present.
Thank you, Council Roberts.
Present.
Thank you, Council Stark.
Present.
Thank you, Council Bean.
Present.
Thank you, Council Weaver.
Present.
Thank you, Council White.
Present.
Thank you, Council Bradley.
Present.
Thank you, Council Bushy. Warden Marriott?
Present.
Thank you, we have a vote.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Otawa, and Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishinaabe. It is through the connection of the Anishinaabe with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize their unique cultures, traditions, and values. Together as treaty people, we have a shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, protecting the future for those generations to come. I'd ask any member of council to declare peculiar interests at the time, if any. Seeing none. Number six.
Sorry, Warden Marriott.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Sorry. I have a conflict relates to Bluewater Health.
Okay, thank you, noted.
Thank you.
We have no rise in report this morning because we had no camera. And we do not have an update from Dr. Renade. He will be with us on April 6. Referring just to item number eight, 2022 budget deliberations. I will have the introduction by our treasurer, Mr. Larry Palarcio. Mr. Palarcio, are you available?
Yes, I am. Thanks, everyone. We started this 2022 budget process in April of 2021. And it's been a lengthy process where divisions basically all worked together in order to prepare a draft budget that we prepared for you on February 16. As you may recall, on the 16th of February, we presented a budget presentation as well as delivered a binder to each of our county councillors. And in that presentation, it highlighted a operating and capital budget of 246.9 million of operating and capital budget expenditures that we plan to provide throughout the year. In order to fund that 246.9 million, the budget's been prepared with a proposed draft tax levy increase of two and a half percent, which is approximately less than half of, you know, CPI right now, based on the latest figures that I received in November of 2021. It's probably higher than that now. In any event, what I'd like to basically just highlight for everyone today is through tabs four to 15, the budgets that are in there are all included within the two and a half percent. So if council wish to add to that budget, it would require, I guess, require a motion to amend the budget or reduce it. Every 823,000 is approximately a one percent increase or a reduction depending on how the vote or the dialogue and debate goes. Just some housekeeping items. We have our finance staff here that would monitor any changes or amendments to the 2022 draft budget, so that will be real time. General managers in the divisions will not be providing presentations today, but the department managers are here to respond to any potential questions that you may have as you go through deliberations. And I'm always there to help as well to provide some guidance as you go through the issues today. Thanks again for everyone engaging in this budget process. COVID has definitely been a challenge as we try to settle our financial framework for the organization and the county.
Thank you, Mr. Palarcio. I'll now turn it back to Mr. Tifo to outline some processes and procedures.
Yes, good morning. As Mr. Palarcio noted, we have finance staff monitoring today's deliberations. Finance staff will also be recording any votes of substance pertaining to the budget itself. So where there's a vote on the budget and/or amendment to the budget, I will ask for your patience as we call members of finance to pull up their screen, enter the mover, second of the motion in question, and wait for that machine, what I call the rotor rudder, to pick who gets to go first on that vote. But otherwise, all of the procedural sort of motions will be done in a normal course. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to B, items referred to budget. I'd look for a motion to lift the table motion, moved by Council Arnold, seconded by Council Miller. All in favor? Pose, that would be carried. How would you, how does council want to deal with this part? Council Arnold? You're on mute, sir.
There we go. Sorry, Warden, the county council. Just looking at the budget today and all the rest of the things that we have going on, the percentage increase that's proposed, and also this looks like it'll be about a two and a half points onto the budget. And hopefully council doesn't mind if I rewrite and have a motion to table this for consideration in the 2023 budget.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Council Stark, all in favor? Pose, that's carried. So that moves us to item number C, review of department budgets. Start with number four. Council Stark.
Thank you, Warden. I have a general question which really applies to the entire budget. And I think it would be most appropriate to direct it to Mr. Palarcio or Mr. Tifo, whichever the case may be. I'll let them decide who should answer. And it really goes through the entire budget. As I was going through, and I'll just make reference to page 17, not that there's specifically any reference to that particular, but this would be an example. The question is, what determines the method of financing of a particular project? Is there a threshold that needs to be met? Or how is it determined whether we're going to pay for something out of reserves versus out of financing? I'm interested in the criteria that's used.
Mr. Palarcio, please.
Through the chair, excellent question. Basically, when you're dealing with lifecycle maintenance type capital projects, those are expenditures that require ongoing funding. So you typically would not choose debt to fund a lifecycle capital project. It'd be a combination of, you know, when you have provincial funding that's available, for example, in your roads program to fund some lifecycle works, the reserve fund financing always comes to play, and there's also levy funding. When you tries to pick debt, it's normally on new type capital projects that, you know, try to leverage some of the financing from your provincial or federal funding as well as a combination of levy funding. So for those new projects, you know, that in time is when you would look at other sources of funding. You know, again, it's a good question in that we really should have a financial policy as far as basically how we apply our financing to capital projects. A lot of it's based on, you know, professional judgment and good and best practices that municipalities undertake. The last thing I would want to see is basically fund lifecycle projects through debt because that's just like using your credit card to pay your hydro bill. So you're going to be, you'd have escalating costs on debt servicing. So we, those are some of the methods that we utilize in order to apply a source of funding to capital projects.
So.
Yes, with that in mind then, I would ask staff to come back with a recommendation on criteria to determine funding methods or funding sources for future investments. And I'll ask, I'll look for a second.
That's seconded by Council Lucely. Further discussion?
Yes. And it actually relates to the final section where we talk about reserves. And there's been a stated position that our reserves, while they're not overly concerning, they are tending towards being slightly lower than what our comparable counties would look at. And the recommendation has been to ensure that we have reserves that are building as opposed to being used, not indiscriminately, but used in excess. And so this would be in keeping, I believe, this would be in keeping with analyzing whether or not the reserves, one, are appropriate, but more importantly, developing a criteria as to how we end up utilizing reserves versus financing options. So that's the direction that I was going. And as Mr. Palarcio indicates, we should have a policy. And we need a report before a policy is developed. Thank you.
Any further discussion before I call the vote? All those in favor?
I'll ask for a recorded vote, please.
Okay. Let's hear it for Mr. Tifo, please.
Thank you very much. Record a vote requested by Council Stark on the motion that's currently on the floor. And we will start with Council Miller. And if you vote yes, you are looking forward to a report for council's consideration on the criteria to be utilized in respect to the utilization of reserves versus debt and vice versa. So I start with Council Miller.
No.
I have a no, Council Miller. Council Napper?
Yes.
I have a yes, Council Napper. Council Roberts?
No.
Council Roberts, I have a no. Council Stark?
Yes.
Council Stark, I have a yes. Council Bean?
No.
Council Bean, I have a no. Council Weaver?
No.
Council Weaver, I have a no. Council White?
Yes.
Council White, I have a yes. Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Arnold, I have a yes. Council Burr?
Yes.
Council Burr, I have a yes. Council Bushy, if you join us. Council Bushy. On, Council Bradley?
Yes.
Council Bradley, you have a yes. Council Broad?
Yes.
Council Broad, I have a yes. Council Cook?
No.
Council Cook, I have a no. Council Ferguson?
Yes.
Council Ferguson, I have a yes. Deputy Warden Hand?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Hand, I have a yes. Council Lucely?
Yes.
Council Lucely, I have a yes. And Warden Marriott?
Yes.
I have a yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Anything else under tab four before we move to tab five? Tab five, CAO. Tab six is Corporate Services. Tab seven is Finance Facilities and Court Services Division. Tab eight, Infrastructure and Development Services Division. Tab seven, or sorry, nine, Public Health Services Division. Council Lucely, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Just a concern on page 20 regarding the EMS. And I know we were looking at getting a strategic plan, just an update. I just want to state, I'm a little disappointed that nothing has come in as of yet for us to consider. We weren't doing a new plan. All we were doing was an update. And I'm just a little disappointed that we have not been able to receive a copy as yet. So I just think it's important. It's not even considered in our budget, and that's just a concern. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
I've heard, just heard that it will be on April 2nd. We will get the report. Go ahead, Council Lucely.
That's great, thank you, Warden Marriott. However, it would have been nice to have something to consider in our budget if there is possible recommended changes. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tab 10, Social Services Division. Councilor Roberts?
Yeah, thank you, Warden Marriott. I just have a question about the increase for the rate of homelessness. Are we seeing that across the province, the 400% increase that we saw from the beginning of the pandemic? Is that something that is occurring across the province?
Ms. Colasanti, would you address that, please?
Certainly, through you, Warden Marriott, to Council Roberts. Yes, we are seeing an increase across the province in the number of individuals experiencing homelessness. It's not 400% everywhere, it really quite varies, but many communities saw a huge increase.
Just to follow up, I was just concerned because in 2019 or 2020, I believe, is when we started the project, we received funding from the federal government for the Reaching Home, which was designed to actually decrease our homelessness. And we're seeing a 400, like, we're seeing a greater increase. So I'm just wondering if there's a correlation to that? Like, we become this, you know, more desirable place for people who are homeless to come? Or because we received that funding and we have that program in place? Or it just doesn't make sense that we have extra funding to decrease our homelessness and we've actually increased by 400%? I understand that there is the COVID factor, which is always, of course, an issue, but we have extra funding and we're actually seeing our homelessness go up.
Through you, Council Roberts, or through you, Warden Marriott, to Council Roberts. I understand what you're saying. Actually, if we had not received the federal funding from Reaching Home, the homeless numbers might still be at 400%. The numbers hit that, and now they've dropped quite significantly. And they've dropped significantly because we've been able to put a homeless system in place. We now, from the time they enter our system, their triage and assessment is done, it is determined which services they need, and then they refer to community partners or to our own systems. With the Reaching Home, we've been able to hire an integrated homeless prevention team. We wouldn't have had that in the past. We've also provided funds to several community partners, both for an indigenous-focused homeless prevention individual and an LGBTQ homeless prevention housing advisor. So we've been able to do significant work, and our numbers today rest just below 100 individuals in our shelter system. And we anticipate by, hopefully, June, we will be able to only be using the Inn of the Good Shepherd and the Haven for our shelter services, that we'll be able to shut down our overflow system. And we wouldn't have been able to do that without the Reaching Home dollars as well as dollars from the province.
Thank you. Council Bradley, please.
Yes, to Ms. Colasanti. You gave us a number in the system. Do you have, I know it's a difficult question to answer, do you have an estimate of how many people are homeless who were not in the system for whatever reason?
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Council Bradley. We did an enumeration of the homeless population in November, and I'm sorry, I don't have that report in front of me, I can certainly get that back. It changes on a regular basis. So we do know there are some individuals who are not in our system and who may be living rough, but we actually think that's a very low number.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for tab 10? Council Roberts?
Yes, I've reserved two reports from local residents who are really concerned about their gas bill this year and the increase. I believe the carbon tax did not help that. Do you know of any programs that can help assist people who are seniors and on a fixed income? Some of them are saying that their gas bill doubled this year, and it could be just the colder weather, but it is a big concern for them, like, they could contribute to them being put into a homeless situation if they can't afford to pay those utility bills. And if not, should we be, as a county, maybe trying to talk to the federal government about taking off the carbon tax or the provincial government taking off the carbon tax, especially for seniors who are on a fixed income? Because from what I'm being told, that every dollar does matter.
Okay. Ms. Colasanti, please.
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Council Roberts. We do have some local programs that can assist individuals with utility arrears, and certainly I'd be happy to send an email after this to outline those. And as for the other piece, I really can't speak to that, that would be council's decision.
Thank you, I would really appreciate that.
Anything else under tab 10? Move to tab 11, Long Term Care Division. Seeing nothing. Number 12, Cultural Services Division. And number 13, Non-Tangible Capital Assets. 14 is Reserves. And 15 is just Compliance. So that's all the tabs. That brings us to number nine, Notice of Motion. Council Bradley.
I filed this motion, I've had several discussions with Mr. Tifo about this. And Mr. Tifo, before I, well, I'm going to move it, see if I get a second.
Seconded by Council Lucely. Go ahead. Go ahead, Council Bradley.
Well, I think the motion is quite straightforward. If there was a reconsideration passed today, then we would deal with it at the next meeting.
Council Broad, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, Warden. Just, I just need some clarity on that. I didn't think that Mr., that Council Bradley could make a motion to bring it forward because he was on the no, or the yes side of the, of our motion. So how was he able to bring that forward? Just a point of order.
Mr. Tifo, could you address that, please?
Yes, thank you, Warden Marriott. So I'll just talk about the motion that's currently on the table, the rules for reconsideration under our rules, and then provide sort of my comments on that. So the motion for reconsideration is that decision that was made by county council on November 3rd through its committee on October 20th, its committee P and. And at that time, through those debates, discussions, council voted against Bluewater Health being exempt from a moratorium for capital grants. So if you voted against that exemption, Bluewater Health would not be eligible for potential grants this year. And so, Council Bradley voted on the non-pervailing side. He voted on the side that voted yes for the exemption. And now we have a notice, and a notice motion for reconsideration. Our rules are set out in Part 20 of our Rules of Procedure, or council's Rules of Procedure. And it dictates, or the rule itself. The rule is, does not state that any member can seek a reconsideration. And as a result of that, as a result of that silence, then our rules, the particular rule in Part 3.2 specifies that where the rules are silent, the Roberts Rules of Procedure apply. The Roberts Rules of Procedure stipulate that only a member on the prevailing side of a vote may look and seek and bring forward a motion for reconsideration. So in these circumstances, based on those rules, based on that review, Council Bradley would not be on the prevailing side, and therefore would be disqualified from bringing a motion for reconsideration.
Through you, Mr. Ward, I understand that, we've had some good discussion on this. I really think you need to move that into the rules of order. Because this idea that it's silent, it should actually be in the rules. And I respect the judgments you gave me on this. But it is silent in our actual rules, and it should be in there then if that's the case. And I, you know, I've moved the motion, I respect that you're saying it's out of order, and the only other option is for someone else to move the motion.
Okay, maybe it's, well, after this meeting, we'll set a time to update those rules. Is there anybody else that wants to make the same motion as Council Bradley?
Everybody on the prevailing side.
On the prevailing side? Going once? Going twice? Councilor Lucely, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. And I realize that's the situation. I can't do it because I, like Mayor Bradley, voted the same way. But before this goes by, I have a comment that I would like to make at this time while we're waiting to see if someone would like to put the motion forward. I want to make it clear that I cannot support money going to the Strathroy Hospital. If we are not going to support our local hospital that we voted on, to not even discuss the issue, is a little disappointing making me feel that this county council does not support our local hospital. And I've heard how some councils have stated they do support the hospital, but yet voted against it, including you, Warden Marriott, to not even consider this. So I'm just a bit disappointed, so I'll leave it at that.
Warden, Warden Marriott? This is being discussed when it's not even on the floor.
Okay, so.
I've done, I've done.
Yes.
Third and final, no motions coming forward. Oh, Council Napper, sorry.
Can you remind us of how everybody voted? Is that out of order, too?
If council wants it.
Council Lucely? Counselor Lucely.
I just want to mention, it's there, it's a recorded vote, or it was a recorded vote.
If council wishes that, we can, Mr. Tifo has it available. But yeah, I don't, I don't think there's a need for it when it's recorded. So any other, anything else before we move on to, or I guess look forward to a motion for the budget? Counselor Weaver.
Yes, I would move that the budget prepared by staff be passed as presented. And thanks to staff, I think they did a great job putting together a budget in a trying year.
Thank you, Counselor Broad. You seconded it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Lucely.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I just want to state that I will not support the budget at 2.5%. I believe during these times when it's been difficult, that that's not necessary. I also feel that this is basically more of a want than a need. And I think our county is in great financial shape with a $19 million debt, a borrowing capacity of $19 million, $54 million in reserve. And what I'd like to consider, Warden Marriott, instead of placing $18.5 million into the reserve, I would like to move that we take out $617,250 out for a total of $17,882.750 going into the reserve. That would reduce our overall budget down to 1.75%, which is the same as last year. And I would like to move that we reduce the amount going into the reserve of $18.5 million by taking out $617,250. And I'll ask for a second.
Counselor Bradley, you second that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, discussion? Counselor, start.
Yes, I'll speak against that motion and I'll vote against that motion because we've already established the fact that our reserves, by comparison to our comparable counties, are lower than what they should be. And I take Mr. Palarcio's advice as it relates to an overall strategy to build up the reserves rather than deplete them. So I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. We already have a motion on the floor, so how can you entertain a second motion, Warden Marriott?
Yeah, thank you for that.
Unless they're going to propose an amendment to the motion that was made, but I think it goes against the spirit of the motion, so.
Thank you, Counselor Arnold. Counselor Lucely, do you wish to make that amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and the second is okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Rumbaus, please.
Just to clarify, will the vote go with the amendment? And then if that doesn't pass, then we will vote on the original motion?
That's correct.
I would request a recorded vote, please.
Okay, noted. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask Mr. Tifo to take, call the vote on the amendments.
Thank you. So we have an amendment to a motion to approve the budget. The amendment being that the amounts deposited into the reserves be deducted or reduced by the sum of $617,250 for the purposes of reducing the net increase to the budget. That is an amendment. And if you vote in favor of that amendment, then the budget will carry with that amendment. If you vote against the amendment, then there'll have to be a separate vote on the budget itself. And as I noted earlier, before we started the session, we do have finance staff recording these budget-specific motions. And so I would ask Ms. Blackstock to share her screen and let us know who will start on this vote.
I have a question by Counselor Rumbaus first.
Yes, before we start the voting process, is it possible to hear from staff as to what the ramifications would be of this amendment, please?
Sure. Mr. Palarcio, would you be able to answer that, please?
Sure, I'll try to answer it as accurately as possible. As far as the reserve fund levels, they are relatively stable, but we're increasing them strategically in areas such as long-term care, affordable housing, and even, you know, our economic development reserve was increased as a result of favorable returns. And the reason they're increasing is because we know we have significant cost pressures coming out there into the future. So it's part of prudent financial planning. A $600,000 reduction is something the staff could absorb. We always take the direction. But the impacts could be, for example, we added $1.2 million into the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund this year. That was an increase. And among staff, we'll look at ways of reducing that. But that's one area that you could potentially be taking the reduction from, which is not an overly popular thing to do. So yes, the reserve funds are relatively low. We're increasing them strategically because we know we have significant pressures there in the future.
Thank you for that, Mr. Palarcio. Any other calls before Ms. Blackstock runs the screen again? If not, let's return to the voting, please.
Thank you. And again, I will repeat the motion so that there's no confusion. So we had a main motion to adopt the budget as presented. That was moved by Counselor Weaver, seconded by Counselor Broad, followed by an amendment motion moved by Counselor Lucely, seconded by Counselor Bradley for the budget to be approved, except for a reduction to contribution to reserves in the amount of $617,000, $617,250. All right, so if you vote in favor of that amendment, the budget passes subject to that amendment. If you vote against that amendment, then you still have to have to deal with the budget. And we go back to the third motion. So the Roto-Rooter has us have Counselor Cook. How do you wish to vote on that?
No.
Counselor Cook, I have a no. Counselor Ferguson?
No.
Counselor Ferguson, I have a no. Deputy Warden Hand? I believe.
Sorry, no.
I have a no, Deputy Warden Hand. Counselor Lucely?
Yes.
Counselor Lucely, I have a yes. Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Miller, I have a no. Counselor Napper?
Yes.
Counselor Napper, I have a yes. Counselor Rumbaus?
No.
Counselor Rumbaus, I have a no. Counselor Stark?
No.
Counselor Stark, I have a no. Counselor Bean?
No.
Counselor Bean, I have a no. Counselor Weaver?
No.
Counselor Weaver, I have a no. Counselor White?
No.
Counselor White, I have a no. Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold, I have a yes. Counselor Byrd?
No.
Counselor Byrd, I have a no. Counselor Bushy, are you online? Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley, I have a yes. Counselor Broad?
No.
Counselor Broad, I have a no. And Warden Marriott?
No.
I have a no. Motion fails.
Okay, back to the original motion, the budget. Mr. Tifo, please.
The original motion was moved by Counselor Weaver, seconded by Counselor Broad, that the 2022 budget as presented by staff, which council reviewed on a tab-by-tab basis, be approved.
And we will have a recorded vote?
Requested by Counselor Stark.
And I'd ask for Ms. Blackstock to share the screen and let us know who starts. Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Counselor Stark, I have a yes. Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Bean, I have a yes. Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver, I have a yes. Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor White, I have a yes. Counselor Arnold?
No.
Counselor Arnold, I have a no. Counselor Byrd?
Yes.
Counselor Byrd, I have a yes. Counselor Bushy, are you online? Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley, I have a yes. Counselor Broad?
Yes.
Counselor Broad, I have a yes. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Cook, I have a yes. Counselor Ferguson?
Yes.
Counselor Ferguson, I have a yes. Deputy Warden Hand?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Hand, I have a yes. Counselor Lucely?
No.
Counselor Lucely, I have a no. Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Miller, I have a yes. Counselor Napper?
Yes.
Counselor Napper, I have a yes. Counselor Rumbaus?
Yes.
Counselor Rumbaus, I have a yes. And Warden Marriott?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much. That would bring us to number 10, Notice of Bylaws.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. It is moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor White, at bylaws six and seven of 2022. As circulated, be taken as read at first and seconded.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried?
It is moved by Counselor White and seconded by Counselor Miller at bylaws six and seven of 2022. As circulated, be taken as read at third and final turn.
All in favor? That would be unanimous. Counselor Broad, do you have a question?
No. No.
Okay, sorry. Well, that brings us to adjournment. Our next meeting will be April 6. And I'm not sure yet if we are in person or not. That was asked to me in the last couple of days, so.
Thank you. I can provide information on that. As reported at our last council meeting, we are, the meeting will be open for those who wish to attend in person here at the Administration Building, County Chambers. But again, the choice to attend in person is yours. The meeting will be hosted on a hybrid basis. And for those who attend in person and those who remain online, it'll be seamless. So at the end of the day, it's your choice to whether or not you wish to participate in person on April 6. And, but if you do so, I would ask that at least a week beforehand, if you do wish to attend in person, that you provide the clerk with just a brief notice that you will be there in person so that we can make the appropriate space plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tifo. Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. If the province changes its mandate around mask wearing, will we be able to come to the council chambers mask-free in April?
Mr. Tifo, please.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Marriott. That's correct. We are following prevention protocols on that. And so our policies, protocols do mirror that legislation. Given the nature of the facility, being a public facility, a public democratic facility, we will be following those rules.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cook, please.
Oh, yeah, just to follow up. Right now, there's no limits on indoor gatherings. So Mr. Tifo mentioned about spacing, so I don't know if that'd be required at this point for April. Just making a point.
Okay. Mr. Tifo, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, thank you. Correct, the capacity limits have been removed. But nonetheless, as the employer, there are still some policies that we do wish to follow for the time being and which will change over time as comfort levels change over time. But nonetheless, simply put, those who wish to attend can attend. And of course, from members of this council, of course, as well from the public. It's just that we do want to make sure that we have the appropriate protocols in place in advance of the meeting.
Okay. Deputy Warden Hand?
If we are intending in person, do we need to do the pre-screening?
Mr. Tifo, please.
Yes, thank you. Good question, Counselor Marriott. Yes, pre-screening will still be in place. And it's done on an individual basis. And if you do fail, the request is that you participate online. And that is consistent with going back almost a year ago, where council amended its rules of procedure for those purposes, whether it's for COVID and/or in any other season, flu season, whatever, other issues.
Yes, there's nothing else. I look for a motion to adjourn. By Counselor Broad and Counselor Bean, all in favor? Opposed? That would be carried. Thank you very much.